Dr. Don Robertson, Acting Superintendent for J and B City Public Schools. And I call this School Board Annual Organizational Meeting to order, serving as Chair pro tem in accordance with School Board Bylaws 1-18 and 1-37 until a Chair is selected. The Clerk will now note for the record all School Board members who were present for today's meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. Present in the School Board chamber is Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Martin, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. At this time, please join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I will now proceed to describe the nomination and voting procedure for the Chair and Vice Chair. The following procedure we used. Any School Board member may nominate a candidate for Chair. A nomination does not require a second. Any School Board member making a nomination may discuss his or her nomination at that time. Other School Board members will be allowed to discuss that nomination, make another nomination, or make other comments concerning any of the nominations. School Board members are requested to keep comments to one minute. School Board members who have not yet spoken during a round of voting have the right to comment or make a nomination before a School Board member who has already spoken during that round of voting. After a School Board member has made comments or a nomination, I will ask if there are any other nominations for Chair. When no further nominations are made, I will call for any final discussions of the nominees. If there is no further discussion on nominees, then I will close the call for nominations. School Board members will vote for nominees during a round by voting using colored pieces of paper that have been provided at their seats. The Clerk will announce the names of all nominees for the position of Chair of the School Board for each round. The nominees during that round of voting will choose a colored ball from a container that the Clerk has. The color chosen by the nominee for that round of voting will be the color of the paper that the School Board members use to vote for that nominee. The Clerk will announce each nominee and the nominee is assigned a color prior to the voting for that round. The Clerk will then call for the vote for Chair and ask School Board members to hold up the piece of colored paper corresponding to the color of the nominee that the School Board member votes for in that round. The Clerk will announce which School Board members voted for which nominee. School Board members who do not choose to vote during a round of voting may do so by not raising a hand or holding up a colored paper. School Board members will not be asked why they did not vote. The nominee who receives the most votes during the round of voting will be declared the Chair. If there is no nominee who has the most votes, or there is a tie vote, or there are no votes, then we will repeat the voting procedures as many times as necessary. After each round of voting that does not result in a declared Chair, the School Board members may nominate additional nominees. Nominees already nominated remain under consideration unless their nominations are withdrawn by the nominator or the nominee. When a nominee receives the most votes, I will declare that nominee the Chair, and the duly elected Chair will then conduct the remainder of the business on the agenda from the Chair's seat on the dais. Please note that School Board members will not change seating assignments at tonight's meetings, tonight's meeting. Only the School Board Chair will change his or her seat to the Chair's seat on the dais. School Board members will have their new seating assignments beginning on January 23, 2024. Are there any objections, motions, or questions concerning this procedure? Hearing none, I will proceed to call for nominations for Chair. Mr. Callen.
I would like to nominate Carolyn Weems for Chair. The reasoning behind that, I think, is important that we do know. The organization that has been hired to conduct the superintendent's search has made us aware as members of the Board that there has been a great deal of concern by the community of the divisiveness that they have perceived taking place on the Board. So without any reference to Tornayce Riggs and her leadership this past year, my thinking is let's shuffle the deck a little bit to see if we can create an atmosphere and a sense of congeniality and working together that might resonate with the community. So with that, I'd like to nominate Carolyn Weems for Chair.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I want to just start off by thanking both Ms. Riggs and Ms. Weems for their service and leadership over the last year. It's not an easy job. It's a time-consuming job. It's not a job that I aspire to put my hat into the ring for. I agree with you, Mr. Callen, and sometimes these are difficult conversations to have. My agreement is that I too have read all of the comments and our emails and heard from our community, and it's kind of one place that all of our stakeholders have some common agreement, whether that's parents or the community or even our staff members, that our Board is part of, is part of the problem. And I hope that we'll commit to moving forward on a better path this year. And with, with that in mind, I think that having a clean slate for leadership is the first step to moving forward with a new team. So with all that said, I nominate Ms. Melnick for the position of Chair. I think we need a clean slate, but I also think we need somebody who has some previous Board leadership experience. And regardless who we vote for, I hope that we will move forward on a unified motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Weems.
To make a comment, thank you, Mr. Callen. Thank you, Ms. Riggs, for serving. I do agree with what has been said as far as our Board has been criticized by the public about how we do business. I will offer calm and steady leadership. I will demonstrate professionalism and proper decorum, no matter if a speaker is speaking things that I don't agree with, or a colleague is saying things that I don't agree with. I will try to add some efficiencies to our meetings by abiding and following Robert's rules and our bylaws and trying to streamline our meetings so our staff is not here from eight in the morning till midnight. I will communicate with all Board members, not just the chosen few or half the Board members. It has got to stop being your side or my side, it's got to be our Board. And I will call and do a lot of work between the meetings. That's what Dan Edwards did such a good job with. It has been said that by some that I don't have time to do this job and that I'm going to delegate everything. That is simply not true. I did not have time last year, I do this year, so I would be honored to serve each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weems. Ms. Manning.
Yeah, I would just like to speak to the topic of the duties of the Chair and Vice Chair by Law 119. I would ask my colleagues to maybe refresh their memory on what this is, because I've heard, heard comments about the roles of the Chair and that I don't believe that are accurate. Our School Board bylaws specifically spell out eight items that the Chair is supposed to do, and the law specifically states that no individual School Board member has the authority to do anything that hasn't been delegated to them by law or by the Board as, as an action. So I just want to point that out because it seems like we've gotten a little bit off task on that. And I also want to point out that if one Board member receives information from staff or from the Chair and their duties as managing, you know, the agenda and things like that, the whole Board should receive that information because that has not been taking place, and I feel that some of us are being left out. And I hope, hopefully that will change with new leadership. Thank you.
Okay, hearing no other, Ms. Toni Otto.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. So as of now, the nominees for Chair of the School Board is Ms. Carolyn Weems and Ms. Kimberly Melnick. I will now proceed to them to have them pick a color from the box.
So let the record show that Ms. Weems drew a yellow tile and Ms. Melnick drew a green tile. So the colors you should have are yellow and green.
I will now ask the School Board members to raise the colored paper, to hold up their colored paper. Please keep them up. Ms. Brown voted for Ms. Weems. Ms. Weems voted for herself. Ms. Manning voted for Ms. Weems. And Mr. Culpepper voted for Ms. Weems. She received five votes. Ms. Franklin voted for Ms. Melnick. Ms. Melnick voted for herself. Ms. Riggs voted for Ms. Melnick. Ms. Owens voted for Ms. Melnick. Ms. Martin voted for Ms. Melnick. And Ms. Anderson voted for Ms. Melnick. She received six vote and is now declared the Chair of the School Board.
So at this time, I'm going to turn the gavel over to our new Chair, Ms. Kim Melnick.
Okay, and with that, I will accept nominations for Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Ms. Franklin for Vice Chair if she is willing to accept that nomination. Again, my belief is that we need a clean slate to start this year, hopefully on a better track of working together than we have this last year, certainly what has been perceived by the community. I do believe that Ms. Franklin is open to hearing from everybody on the Board and has been willing to work with all members of the Board. And so that is, that's my nomination. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Culpepper.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Brown. While it is her first year on the Board, I have known no other member to do her homework or their homework quite so thoroughly as she does. She provides outstanding input to every meeting.
Any further nominations? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed with the, oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So I would like to, to think that we're starting off on a path of openness, but I was not contacted by Ms. Franklin to ask for her support, to ask for my support, or to even notify me that she was going to be running for this position. I, I did receive phone calls from Ms. Brown and from Ms. Weems, and so starting off a note of, of a lack of reaching out to every Board member is, is a prime example of why I will be supporting Ms. Brown, because she does try to listen to every single individual. Thank you.
May I say something?
Yes.
On that same note, I was not contacted by Ms. Weems about anything, even the other day when she made phone calls to certain people on the Board about where we were being located for our meeting. So some people were notified by Ms. Weems.
That has nothing to do with the last.
Point of border, Madam Chair, this is about the Vice Chair election, not the Chair election.
So when you're talking about openness, let's not bring up something that you throw glass, throw a stone in a glass house about. Thank you.
Okay, yes, Ms. Martin.
I'd like to signal my support for Ms. Franklin. We have both served on the historic Kempfville Citizens Advisory Committee over the years. She has been a PTA president, she understands the inner workings of our schools, and I find her to be well reasoned, neutral party when we're talking over policies, procedures, and regulations. Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed with the same procedure. Ms. Toni Otto. So our nominees for Vice Chair are Jennifer Franklin and Kathleen Brown. They will now proceed to pick a colored tile. So now I would ask Board members to lift their colored card in voting for the Vice Chair and to please hold them up. The votes are for Ms. Franklin. Ms. Franklin, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Owens, and Ms. Martin all voted for Ms. Franklin. The votes for Ms. Brown were Mr. Callen, Ms. Brown, Ms. Weems, Ms. Manning, and Mr. Culpepper. So Ms. Brown received five votes. Ms. Franklin received six. So the new School Board Vice Chair is Ms. Franklin. Okay, our next item of business is the appointment of Clerk and Deputy Clerk. So I call for a motion to approve the Acting Superintendent's recommendations for appointment of the Clerk and Deputy Clerk. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'm sorry?
Seconded.
That motion was Ms. Owens?
And then, yeah, seconded by Ms. Brown.
Seconded by Ms. Brown. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I call for a vote to approve the appointment of the Clerk and Deputy Clerk. All in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes for the appointment of the Clerk and Deputy Clerk, and I thank you. And I congratulate you both. All right, D is schedule of meetings, January 24 through June of 25. You received that information in your packet. I call for a motion to approve the schedule of School Board meetings through June 30, 2025, as presented. All right, motion by Ms. Anderson, second. Second by Mr. Callen. Is there any discussion? Mr. Culpepper.
I'm not asking for any changes, but I just want to point out when meetings are scheduled subsequent Tuesdays every week, it's guaranteed I won't be able to make them all. So the way February, March are laid out, I'm guaranteed to miss a couple of those.
Okay, duly noted. Did everybody hear that? Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the schedule of meetings. Okay. Next, item nine on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the amended, the amended agenda? So let me read this for the public. Due to the current weather conditions, the decision has been made to shorten tonight's meeting. Accordingly, the formal meeting agenda will be modified to remove public comments and information items. The School Board agenda will continue with the scheduled afternoon workshops, the annual meeting elections, appointments, and adoption of meeting schedule consent and action items. All other matters will be moved to a future agenda. This decision has been made for safety purposes, and we apologize for any inconvenience. Please be safe tonight. Are there any other modifications to the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, just a clarification, are we going to be voting on the consent agenda?
So this is.
Or just the personnel?
Yes, this is the modification. So we are removing number, item number 10, the Superintendent's report, number 12, public comments, number 13, which includes all information under A, B, and C, so the Gifted Resource Cluster Program, the textbook adoption, of course, 14, returning to public comment, and we leave all rest, all the rest as is.
I have some comments on that after that.
So I'll entertain a motion first.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Owen, second. By Ms. Anderson. All right, discussion.
So I don't mind moving the, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Information portion, and I struggle with the consent agenda even because I don't think that I'm in the position to make a judgment call on which things the public would want to speak on and which ones they would not want to speak on prior to a vote, although I, I'd be interested if it was urgent, that would be important to me. But I am gravely concerned about removing the public comment, especially when it was only nine speakers. You know, we have community here tonight, we have staff here tonight, and I feel like if we were not safe coming to our meeting to give public comment for our citizens, I really feel like we shouldn't have had our meeting at all. And furthermore, I got a text message from VBCPS as a parent of the school district, and it said that our meeting was going to be as regularly scheduled. Well, our meeting is scheduled, included public comment, so I will not support adopting this agenda with these modifications. I do believe that we need to hear from the public, especially since we have a superintendent search ongoing. Thank you.
Yeah, I share Ms. Brown's concerns, and I, I want to highlight that the bylaw that governs this decision is by Law 1-38. It does permit the, the Chair or the Clerk or the Superintendent to authorize situations like this to make changes. However, at the, at the end of it, it says that it's subject to review by the School Board. And I didn't know about this until I received a message from our Clerk. I was not consulted on it at all. I did not receive a phone call from the Chair who made this decision. And again, the lack of participation by all Board members. And I would have liked to see us cut some of our workshops so that we could prioritize public comments. For me, public comments is one of the most important things on this agenda. And for that reason, I'm not going to be able to support the changes to the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Ms. Franklin? Okay. Oh, you're telling, you're telling me, okay.
Okay. I just wanted, I guess, comment on why I do support amending the agenda as described. If we are in a situation where we have a weather warning, a weather emergency, a weather situation that could impact the safety of the Board, obviously the public, but for me right now, my, my focus is on those who are involuntarily at our meeting, and that's our employees, who this is part of what they are required to do. If determinations were made that the roads could be unsafe, that trees could be downed, that streets could be flooded, or whatever the other situations are, unfortunately, our, our district has situations in our history where employees have been harmed coming to work or leaving from work when there were weather situations. I hope that as a district that we take that incredibly serious. I respect and appreciate public comment. I read it in the emails when we, when we receive them frequently. The vote that we have is for personnel. I think it is important that we continue moving forward of staffing our, our positions as quickly as possible and that those kinds of decisions don't wait. But since that is our, the primary thing that we're voting on is staffing from the personnel report, which isn't part of what the public comes to comment on, though they could comment on the consent agenda, and perhaps somebody is coming to comment saying that they don't think Green Run should have a fire alarm replaced, ultimately, I think that this is in the best safety for our employees, and I, I would hope that as a Board we're able to pass that.
So because the consent agenda has the fire alarm replacement, which I don't think the whole time I've been on the Board, I've had anybody speak about that in public, but
But, or personnel appointments, administrative appointments. I do feel comfortable tonight. However, Ms. Lanetti, in the future, if we would make sure that we, you know, address Ms. Manning's concern about making sure that the Board is aware of that, I think that that would be appropriate as well, so.
That's something with new leadership we can talk about, manage it.
I'm just suggesting that we would allow that conversation in the future.
Quite honestly, we don't actually have a bylaw that deals with other events. We have two that deal with changing at the last minute, but maybe that's something we look at or send back to PRC to look at, when you would make that decision, how you make it. Unfortunately, the whole Board can't vote electronically. So you're going to have to have a method for someone to make a decision until you get there. And that is the way bylaws read. You can modify it afterwards. But sometimes things come up and you cannot vote electronically, so somebody's gonna have to make the decision.
Okay, so before we vote, Dr. Robertson, the only item on the consent agenda is the recommendation of General Contractor for Green Run High School's fire alarm replacement. I don't want to assume, but it looks like that is necessary. We probably need to move. Okay.
If that's Mr. Freeman, he's concur that we should proceed with that.
Okay. So Madam Clerk, could you repeat the, who made the motion in a second? The motion was made by Ms. Owens and seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? Ms. Riggs?
I would like to respond with some of the questions that people had since I was the Chair. All of the people that this did affect were called individually. Except for the school board, and you were sent an email immediately. But all of the speakers were called individually and emailed. And each one of the departments that this affected were called and asked, was it very important that they have that tonight? The consent was one. And the HR was the other with our personnel. The reason we had dinner tonight, because Mrs. Manning has suggested having our people come in, the public come and speak. Instead of that, it's because I asked Mrs. Toni Otto to please call Food Services and say, "Look, we want you to be safe like the rest of the employees. You do not have to do this tonight. But if you are, you know, it's up to you." We left that up to them. And they told her, if I'm right, correct, that they had it ready and prepared. And they would prefer to bring it over here, bring it earlier than they usually do, so their employees could go home. And that is why we kept the dinner. And that's what happened with that. So I just want to let everyone know, everyone did get the information. I did text my Vice Chair, Ms. Weems, and told her what was happening because I had discussed this with the Acting Superintendent and with our lawyer and our clerk. So for everybody's, you know, and the public's, that that was done. That was not done in secret at all. I followed the bylaws. Mrs. Lanetti made sure I did. So I just want to make sure everyone knows that I have tried to follow the rules from the beginning of sitting at this seat. So thank you.
Any further comment? All right, seeing none, I call for a vote. All in favor, please signify by raising your hands. We have six ayes. Okay, motion carries. Next. Y'all said to do the nays. Oh, I'm sorry. All opposed, please signify by raising your hands. And we have five nays. The adoption of the agenda, of the amended agenda, did pass. Thank you. Moving on to number 11, the approval of the December 12, 2023, regular school board meeting. Are there any modifications to the December 12 regular school board meeting minutes as presented? Ms. Riggs? Okay, all right. There were no amendments, so we have a motion for Ms. Riggs, a second for Ms. Weems. Any discussion? Seeing none, please signify your approval by raising your hand. Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass. Next on the agenda is number 15, the consent agenda, which is the recommendation for the, of General Contractor Green Run High School's fire alarm replacement. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Weems. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass. Okay, on to action, the Personnel Report. And administrative appointments. I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Anderson, second. Ms. Owens, any discussion? All right, seeing none. But Dr. Robertson, do you have an administrative appointment you'd like to share?
I do. You gotta vote first.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand. Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass. Okay, Dr. Robertson?
Yes, thank you. I'm pleased tonight that the Board has approved of our recommendation of Tom Quinn, formerly the Principal at Great Neck Middle School, to be the new Executive Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning in the Department of Teaching and Learning. He'll come to the next meeting to be recognized. Thank you very much.
Okay, committee organization or board reports. Any board members have anything to share? It was still on there. Okay, Ms. Weems?
Yes, we, I met with the Workforce Development Committee that we're teamed up with the City Council and local business people, and we've done, I think, a great job. We've had eight meetings. We are finalizing our recommendations. We will have a recommendation to the school board in March. And it's been a great committee to chair and a lot of exciting, innovative, and creative ideas that we will be bringing to you in a few weeks. Thank you.
Yes.
It was Rosemary Wilson and Rocky Holcomb. Since Rocky is no longer on there, it's just Rosemary Wilson right now.
I thank you for that information. For the record, for the public record, do we have anything to return to? Close session? Okay. So with that, we are adjourned at 6:38.